To go ahead and welcome everybody to our March 7th Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. Everybody here has a copy of the minutes from the last meeting. Are there any changes that need to be made? If so, let us know at this time. If not, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the February 7th, 2022 minutes. Second.
I've got a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Moving along, item A, UR 2204, a utility review for close to 20,000 linear feet of directional and missile bore conduit.
Yes, sir.
So, this is another 115211 review. I'll point out a couple of unique things on this one, but for the most part, it's the same reviews we have geographically. This is in Bell Chase and Song Grove for installation of fiber. The same list applies. We did add a couple of things on this one. One a note and one more of a condition. The, all of the utility boxes are underground. The plan, we did see located those, I believe, close to intersections. And the comment was to try to locate those where the other utility boxes are. So, we kind of consolidate those. You can, instead of spreading those out in front of everybody's yard, because we have so many fiber companies installing, to really work with our right-of-way inspector and get those located near existing ones. And then just wanted to mention, because we have this comments during our internal reviews, but wanted to mention, we do have, and it's condition eight there, we do have locates required before anyone starts work. Our locators are limited to doing about 750 feet a day of line locates, and they have a lot of customers. So, we want to make sure that our fiber installers are making sure they're getting those locates before they start work, even potholing. And to also be aware that we have a lot of projects going on, so, you know, it's better to plan. Those locates are good for 21 days, so it's, sometimes I think they're wanting to install 3,000 feet a day. So, get a few days ahead and we'll go from there. But other than that, staff does recommend approval of the utility review.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any questions for staff at this time?
I do.
Yes.
When you say the contractor is responsible for any tree damage, what, you know, what are we doing about that? How's that happen?
So, what happens when we go, leave here? The, there's a right-of-way permit that follows up. That is, the right-of-way inspector will be, John Thomas, will be monitoring those projects. When he sees something that may conflict, we try to get ahead of it. So, if he sees something, he gets in touch with our city horticulturist, Jamie Rylands. They kind of work through that. You know, that's just a caveat in case they go out and do something without our knowledge. They will be responsible for that. But we try to...
So, it's in your contract with the contractor that they are responsible?
Yes. One other mention on this one, we have it in here, but there are some apartments within this, our common area. This does not give approval for private property, so this is right-of-way approvals. So, any easements or anything needed by private property will be their responsibility.
Thank you, Hunter.
One other thing, just for clarification. The general location on your thing on page is not where it is.
On the staff report or on the slide?
Yeah, you have west side of...
On this piece of paper right here.
You have west side of Main Street, Chapman Street, Taylor Street. That's Montrose.
Okay. That should, this should be the...
This is the Bell Chase.
Yep, Bell Chase and Song Grove.
Bell Chase and Song Grove, that's fine.
Off of Bush, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah. One other thing, Hunter. These guys, we've been having a lot of issues with utilities. Are we congregating? Are we come collaborating significantly enough when these guys come out with our utility guys to make sure that we don't continue doing the same thing over and over again?
That's, the locates are a big portion of that.
Okay.
You know, with, and it kind of is geographically where it's at. The older the utilities, it's harder sometimes to locate. So, modern materials, a lot of time have easy, you know, even when it's PVC, you can put a, you know, magnetic metal strip in there so you can find those. So, yes, that is the sole reason we have the requirement for the locates before work is started.
Even further than that, like, are they, are our guys even, when they come out, are we kind of have anybody, a liaison that shows up at the site just to kind of...
No. Unfortunately, we don't have that kind of staff to, you know, babysit every contractor out working. That's, that's, be great, but we just don't have those kind of numbers.
I love the fiber. I just know what we've been dealing with.
Yep.
All right. Very good.
That's the job of the newest city councilman, by the way, and we have a real cultural long share for you, Corey. All right. Is there anyone here on behalf of Point Broadband that wishes to speak? Okay. And this is not a public hearing, but does anybody from the public have anything they want to add to this? If not, commissioners?
Motion, Mr. Chairman. UR 22.04, Bell Chase and Song Grove, fiber installation, I move we approve subject to staff recommendations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion, a second to approve subject to staff recommendations. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. All right. Motion passes unanimously. All right. SR 2201, Polo Crossing.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman. This is a carryover from last month, site plan for Polo Crossing. And when I get through, the next case will be the MOP for the same project that Mike will be presenting. This is on Greeno Road. It's 1.77 acres, five-unit MOP. We saw this last month, and this was the one, if you recall, I'll leave that there. It's just south of Wolf Bayview Funeral Home. There was a question we had that kind of, we worked fast to work with the tree commission, but there was a big live oak that we required saving. So, what you're seeing here is the revised plans that does provide a lot of area on the south side of the site to preserve that particular tree and did a good job, I believe, on giving the, another one room. What you see in your site plans and your staff report has changed just a little bit, so I'll show that as we move through. But for the dumpster locations, stormwater, all of those things were, haven't changed. Fencing, there was a buffer provided against the adjacent residential property on the south and the east. You can see that on the plan on the screen in front of us. We looked, since the staff report, we did kind of work with the applicant to address a few things. One of the only lingering things, this area shown, staff feels like that can be a little better landscaped. You know, there's a couple of parking areas. You know, it doesn't require much there, but that area, there was some added, you can see around the detention area, but around the parking, there's some screening needed. So, that can, we were recommending that happen at staff level and as a condition of approval or before it gets to city council. The building is shown, did not change from last month. However, the parking did. They had more parking than was allowed by the zoning ordinance, so they've got that number to match the uses. This is two restaurants on the north and south end of the building, and spaces two, three, and four are listed as retail commercial. Since your staff report came out, there was a change. Your staff report shows a site plan with the sidewalk just ending in a parking space, and this is connecting to the multi-use trail that runs along parallel Greeno Road. The applicant has submitted a revision in the latest plan that comes off on the south end of the property, that comes in a better location. It, they're going to provide a picnic area to provide some outdoor seating, and they've moved the bike parking near that access where it was kind of in the back, so has more access as the zoning ordinance requires to the front door. So, we did, in your staff report, have a few conditions. I've struck through those to show that their revised plans are already meeting those. Wasn't sure about the irrigation. I think everyone knows this. We'll leave it there. Irrigation was shown a little bit in the right-of-way, so making sure that gets on private property. Parking shall meet the impervious requirements as applicable. I'm pretty sure that is accomplished. I want to kind of go back to site plan real quick. You see the property, the parking area to the east is aggregate and through the drive-thru, and the bicycle parking is paved, so they are providing impervious surface for those parking spaces. So, that could be struck through as well. We'll review those building permits, make sure they are impervious. And then a revised landscape plan to include the screening for the dumpster enclosure and additional plannings between the parking area and detention shall be provided and approved by the planning director. I will just mention, traffic drainage utilities will be presented by Mike during the MOP, but if y'all have any questions about the site plan review, I'll be happy to answer those. This would be a recommendation to the city council to approve if you so see fit or deny or whatever options you want.
Any questions for staff at this time? All right. Would anybody like to speak on behalf of the developer at this time? Okay. This is, as Hunter said, this is a zoning issue, so it goes down as an ordinance, so we just make recommendations. City council has the final say.
Not an ordinance.
I mean, it's similar. It's in the zoning rather than the subdivision, so our attorney's not here to explain the difference to me, which he has four times, and I still don't understand the mops from site plan reviews, but one day I will.
Ordinance would require a public hearing. We don't, so we don't have a public...
One day I'll figure out the difference between these two beasts. But at this time, I will go ahead. Does this require a public hearing?
It does not.
Okay. Staff, any questions? The developers here?
I have questions. And this is going, this question is going to go across the board as I, as we go through today, looking at the packet. I keep hearing impervious parking, and I thought we was trying to move towards with our history of what we know about our runoff and things of that as we add the density and more water and things like that with the weather. I thought we was trying to go to a pervious type situation when we start doing our parking and things of that nature for runoff and stormwater to control it as we move forward for future generations.
You know, kind of, so the paved parking on the north side of the building is your standard asphalt paving.
Okay.
So, that, but the brick pavers and the impervious gravel will allow the drainage, so...
So, it's semi-permeable.
Yeah.
That's better than...
And we've got, we've got percentages that each project must meet. With the inclusion of the easternmost parking area, they're exceeding those requirements.
Okay.
Any more questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So, move.
I have a motion to approve subject to staff recommendations. Is that subject to staff recommendations, Corey?
Yes.
Motion to approve subject to staff recommendations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Recommend to approve?
Yeah, recommend.
Recommend.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously. It's going to look like a rerun again, Polo Crossing. This time we're doing the MOP, multiple occupancy project.
Good evening. So, similar request, the multiple occupancy review, a little more on the technical side. We'll go through these first couple of slides that we've just seen, the aerial and the zoning map on your screen. Site plan, the same one that has been revised for the sidewalk that we just saw and a couple of other items on there. Some of the site data, it's zoned, zone B2, the front and rear building setbacks of 20 feet and a side setback of 10 feet, all being met. Utilities, so this is Fairhope Utilities for water, sewer, gas, and power. There's a 12-inch water main available to serve the site. Sewer is gravity-fed to an existing manhole on the site at the southeast corner of the property, and power will more than likely require a bore under Highway 98, and any appropriate ALDOT permits would be required for that work. Gas is available to the site. All five units will be utilizing gas, and the meters are at the rear of the building, and the gas line shall come from the right-of-way to the building, should be placed to disturb, to avoid disturbance with any of the protected trees. AT&amp;T is available for communications, and the trash pickup is via the private trash dumpster near the northeast corner of the building, which is screened and gated. The stormwater is collected in underground pipes and carried to a detention pond at the northeast corner of the property. The detention pond does discharge into an existing stormwater structure that's located on the north, and at time of building permit, a drainage easement will be required before permitting. That structure does go across private property onto the north side, so an easement to use that will be needed. The traffic study was completed. It recommended that a 445-foot northbound, right, northbound right D cell lane be installed due to existing conditions with Windsor Drive located to the south of the property. There's only 220 foot of available space, so the final configuration will have to be permitted and approved by ALDOT for, once they look at and review the traffic study themselves before actually permitting for the project. The landscaping, there were several heritage trees on site that were saved. As Hunter mentioned, the horticulturist and a third-party arborist reviewed those. The building was actually redesigned to save that 32-inch live oak near the entrance and also gave the, I think it's a 55-inch oak tree, a little additional space. Parking meets the parking requirements, meets the building height. Same image where the sidewalk, different from what was in your staff reports, has been adjusted to the south side to allow that pedestrian connectivity, to go more freely into an actual pedestrian-style area with a courtyard, little picnic tables, and bike racks to get you to the front door. Staff's recommendation is approval with the following conditions, that the traffic improvements recommended by the traffic study and/or ALDOT will be installed by the developer. Final placement and aid to construction costs for all utilities shall be approved by the respective utility superintendent. The signage shall conform with the Fairhope sign ordinance. The drainage easement to the north property be provided before building permit, and five different than the staff report you received was that the revised landscape plan to include the screening for the dumpster enclosure and additional planning between parking areas and detention areas shall be provided and approved by the planning director. All staff would be happy to answer any questions, and as you know, the engineers are with us this evening for the project.
Mike, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Mike, does, generally, does ALDOT allow for a, an existing street to be incorporated into a right, for example, in this case, a right-turn lane for another property?
I've seen it done. I don't know with Windsor being how often it's used. Honestly, I'm not really qualified to answer that question on behalf of ALDOT for what they will or will not allow. Hence, that's where ALDOT's recommendation, whether it's to relocate Windsor Drive or if that 220 feet they feel is adequate, or what it is, they come with the final solution.
But that kind of begs the question then, that we're going to recommend approval, maybe approval, maybe recommend approval, and then what happens if ALDOT says no?
Then they wouldn't be able to build it.
Well, but the traffic study says it is needed.
Traffic study said it was needed or another alternate method agreed on by ALDOT.
I know everyone wants us to get those final answers, but working with different jurisdictions, including the state, you know, that's, they're on a different schedule than we are, and no one wants to be the first, but we tend to be the first to get through here. And then the applicant has to go make ALDOT happy and do what they require, so...
We've had a lot of experience with ALDOT, and that's a difficult scenario to make them happy.
I would not say that in a public meeting.
Well, I just did. I would.
They have a lot of projects, so we do, you know, kind of, whatever happens through us.
Well, I just think it'd be, I mean, it does, and that's, I'm not going to belabor the point, but I mean, it's one of those things where we've, we've got a recommendation, and it's going to be subject to the traffic study and ALDOT, but the two may be in conflict, so then how's that get, how's it get resolved for the developer?
Because whatever ALDOT says goes, and we don't have any authority over ALDOT at all.
Okay, okay. But here's my point, just to understand. If ALDOT says no, 220 feet is not enough, and you can't do it, then we got a traffic study that says you got to have, you need to have a turn lane. Do we, is it approved?
If ALDOT doesn't give them ingress, then they can't build the project.
I mean, then there's more options there that, you know, ALDOT may say reduce your unit counts, you know, there's different options that come into play there.
Okay.
But yes, if ALDOT says you've got to do this, but you don't have the room, then theoretically, then the project doesn't get off the ground.
Okay. All right.
Do want to add, not really a condition, but just a note, something we kind of missed in our comments. Mike, can we go back to the site data table? Just to clarify, that building height shows 32 feet, some odd inches. It is 30 feet.
Okay.
We measure the average, so the peak on the highest tip is 32, and that's okay, meets our ordinance, but 30 feet is the actual building height. So, y'all can change that before we, just that note to 30.
All right. All right. Any more questions for staff at this time? Is this a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mike. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. SD 2210, Polo Crossing, this is a multiple occupancy project located just south of Bayview Funeral Home on Greeno Road. Does anybody from the public wish to speak about this project? If not, I will close the public hearing at this time.
You got one.
Oh, yes, sir. I'm sorry.
Can I come up and address the turn lane? I just want to make...
Oh, are you the...
Yes.
Yeah, let me go ahead and close the public hearing then. Nobody from the public, once again, wants to speak. All right, I'm going ahead and closing the public hearing at this time. Yes, sir.
I'm Steve Fisher.
Wait, you didn't put that brace on your arm so we'd feel sorry for you.
It's off. I remember it was like this last week, last time when I fell in the aisle out there. But anyway, I just want to answer your question about the ALDOT. I've been in touch with Michael Smith, the permit manager in Mobile, and he's assured me that 200-foot turn lane is going to be adequate for the job.
Okay, great. Answered that question.
I had asked him to correspond with the email. I did, I was in therapy I didn't get to today, so I'll get that taken care of and sent to everybody.
Very good.
So, just want to clear that up.
Yeah. This is a very nice drawing that you've done, by the way. I think it...
It was a, it was a miracle work.
Well, I mean, we appreciate them for saving the trees, you know, that's what really makes Fairhope fair.
And another thing I'd like to mention is we will get with the arborist when we're installing those pavers, because there's, you know, a lot of sections show 12 inches of depth, which may not be the case in here, but we want to get with him and make sure, you know, the condition of the tree is, you know, utmost importance.
Yeah, when you have those stones like that, if you can, you know, the pervious ones, if you can, you know, get some sand there based on what the elevation is between them to keep the pressure off. I had the project building the parking lot on the north side of the library for the Single Tax Corporation. We spent about $24,000 to save a heritage magnolia tree back there and basically kind of ramped it up with sand and then, you know, put those pervious paving stones on there. And that thing, it's been, I think, four years now, and that tree hasn't lost a single limb.
Well, that's what we're going to try to do with this one.
That's great. We appreciate everything you've done on this very much.
I have a question. I mean, what's going to make this entrance any difference than, any different than Chick-fil-A and Athene? They have a turn lane. I just, I envision this, this single entrance, and I just see that cluster.
Being congested?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's my biggest concern, because you're going to have people coming in, and like me, I would go make a left-hand turn to go back down 98, then you're going to have, it's going to be easier to make the right, but then you have that light that's right there. I just feel like that's going to be Chick-fil-A at Target.
Right. I'm not sure how long that turn-in lane is. I'll need to look at that, but, I mean, I guess you got two separate entities here. You got a coffee shop and Chicken Salad Chick, and I don't, I hope they do a great business. I don't know, I don't know if they got the Chick-fil-A volume. I'm really not sure.
Well, I mean, if you go to the other side of that street where Chicken Salad Chick is right now in the Staples parking lot, it's the same thing coming back out. You can't make a...
64.
Yeah. So, I'm trying to figure, how do we alleviate that? Because we're managing to accumulate a lot of traffic that this, that studies are saying we don't have, but we do have.
Right.
And one of the things we've looked at, and I don't think we've had a chance to speak with the same, but it's a solution we've used elsewhere, and it's used quite a bit, is when you, a business license is given, you give a business license to the restaurant, and then actually the restaurant's drive-through, and it gives kind of a quick solution if there is any, frankly, if they keep traffic on their site, nobody's really worried about it. But if it starts being a problem in our state highway, then there needs to be a solution, and we can hold that drive-through business license until it's remedied or...
But why can't we do that ahead of time instead of getting there? Because if we already know, it's going to generate a lot of traffic.
I agree.
So, why can't we do two?
Well, it's not an exact... Claire, we don't know, because this is a, you know, well, this is a coffee shop, and right now, we've got this, this meeting, we've got a Starbucks, we've got this coffee shop. I had to call my office for an insurance proposal for a coffee shop where the Radio Shack is, so there's three brand-new coffee shops going to be right in the same location, and, you know, who knows what the traffic will be? It's not going to be Chick-fil-A. I don't think anything's got the traffic Chick-fil-A knows.
Yeah, I don't think it'd be Chick-fil-A, but I think she's on to something. I think that definitely, we already...
Well, and that's what Hunter and I discussed earlier today, is if you go ahead and you get a separate business license for the drive-through, then if something happens, you can make the correction. Then if nothing happens, you don't have to worry about it.
So, are we going to do it, play offensively? Are we going to do it ahead of time, or are we going to do that in retrospect?
Well, we don't know what we do ahead of time now.
And one of the things we look at that is what we call stacking, you know, where...
Double lane.
How many, how many cars you can fit in before they do exit into the right-of-way.
That's what Starbucks is.
So, with the turn lane, what you hope for there, there's stacking on the north drive-through that can wrap around the building, stacking. You see five cars there, but even coming into their parking lots, you've got another six or seven, and then the 225 turn lane would provide 11 more cars for stacking. So, we think we've addressed that between the, you know, the whole project.
And if we can, and if we can get that, that, you know, and if we can get that business license separate, and they know that, hey, we got to manage this thing or we're going to have trouble, then they, on their behalf, darn well better start saying, move on forward, sir, we'll bring your bag out in a second.
Right. Do they do that once, in retrospect, we have, is that a condition that we're putting in this, in this, what we're doing right now?
No, that's something that we're working on outside of this. We don't have the authority, and we don't have the authority to deny it based on that when it meets the, you know, the regulations. That's something we're looking at doing just for, you know, other issues where someone could just open, you know, where, at another location.
Yeah.
It's very, very good.
It works. Moving forward. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. It's a good question.
It's been talking for about three months, so it's kind of one of our first.
All right. Any other questions, concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I have something in my mouth.
What'd you say?
I said I have something in my mouth, so I, but I'll go ahead and make the motion. SD 2022, 2210, a move to approve with staff recommendations.
I have a motion to approve subject to staff recommendations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Nay.
Any opposed, say nay. Let's do a hand count. All, whoever, all in favor say aye. Raise hands, one, two, three, five. Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Clarice?
I'm going to have to say, I just...
All right. Five, two. All right.
Four, two.
One, two, three.
Four, two.
Oh, four, two, excuse me. I gotta take my shoes off to get, you know, one shoe off to get that high, I'm sorry. Um, alright, next item on the agenda, Fairhope Urology. Yes, sir, Mike?
Good evening again, so this is Site Plan Review 22.02 for Fairhope Urology. It's the request of Robert M. Green, Jr., for site plan approval of the Fairhope Urology. It's a one-unit. Coles Murphy Glover and Associates is authorized agent and engineer of record for the project. The property is currently zoned B2, and it's gonna be a little confusing. The next case you will see is a subdivision case that will actually, that actually creates the lot that this site plan review is situated on. Uh, so with that said, the subject property is zoned B2, it's probably 1.66 acres, and located on the west side of US Highway 98, south of Hoyle Avenue. As I mentioned, we also have a minor subdivision application for this as well that we will see immediately following this. Up on the screen, you see Hoyle and Greeno, the shaded in pink area is part of the subject property. It's the northeast corner of that entire pink area that you see is where the site is going to be. And the site plan makes it a little clearer, you can see Hoyle Avenue on the north side of the screen, and the dark black lines indicate the property lines. There's a portion to the left where the drainage facilities are located, with the road coming in off of Hoyle will be the private entrance for the development. The building is situated at the corner of Hoyle and Greeno, front pushed up against the 20-foot landscape buffer along Greeno. The buildings meet the height restrictions of B2, elevations are shown below for the buildings, materials are primarily brick. The landscaping plans, they comply with our tree ordinance of the 20-foot buffer along the right-of-way of Greeno Road. They have been reviewed and approved by the City Horticulturalist. This is, we've also, if you remember last month, we had an informal review where we discussed this property, the zoning of the property, and what we were gonna be presenting coming up forward with the different lots on the property. So there, the landscape buffer along the residential parcels shall be maintained by the property owner or future property owners, and be a visual buffer, and maintain that buffer. No visual gaps shall be permitted through there, anything would have to be replanted inside of that buffer and remain natural. On the landscape plan, on the left side of your screen, is a sodded detention area with a 20-foot natural undisturbed buffer along the property line, and additional trees and shrubs planted along, along the road. On the east side of the property, again, that 20-foot buffer, save, the tree survey was done, all the heritage trees, some of those are located on that east side and being replanted with live oaks in that 20-foot buffer. The parking requirements are met, we have landscape islands inside of the parking to break up the parking lot areas, do not exceed the 12 parking spaces. Again, on the parking, the parking, parking requirements are met, we're not, not seeing the compact spaces that need to be in there, the zoning ordinance requires 30 to 40% required spaces, that will need to be, as a condition revised, to meet the parking requirements of the zoning ordinance for the compact spaces.
Now, I was asking Hunter a question about the compact spaces.
Yes, sir.
Um, are those spaces that Honda Accords and Civics and those types of cars can fit in? Or are they smaller, more like your, you know, golf cart kind of things?
They're more designed for the smaller minicars, the Hondas, the Mini Coopers, um, maybe a Fiat is designed for.
If we're doing that in a lot of these cases where so many people are buying these small electric cars, um, that's cool, but I don't know how many people are gonna go to the urologist in their small electric car, you know?
That is a very, very valid point, I don't, I agree with you 100% on that. There's gonna be a lot of larger vehicles, and oftentimes, you'll see some of those compact spaces that are reserved, either, either one car's taking up two of the spaces because they can't fit in one, or they're left, or they're left empty.
Right, so you're saying this one doesn't have the compact?
No, sir, the site plan does, does not show the.
In this case, I don't have a real, personally, I don't know about the rest of the commission issue with that, but we might wanna put a note on while we approve it, you know?
And I think that's something we probably need to look at, it makes a lot of sense. It, it's a blanket statement within our zoning ordinance.
There's 12 compact car spaces, so the site was lacking six, unless it was labeled, and I missed, missed the label on it.
We based that on the actual required parking.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we just had those extra spaces that, that 20 to 21. It was required parking.
Gotcha, alright, scratch that.
Okay, so that, so, so the compact cars are the extra 20% above the regular allotted?
They put the number of compact spaces based upon the number of required spaces.
Off the required spaces.
And then because urology businesses are so incredibly slow, they added some extra parking spaces, 'cause they won't get people out of there for five or six hours, so.
Got it.
So, so the site plan review does meet, or the site plan provided with the 12 compact spaces on the north end of the property, uh, does meet that, disregard that last conversation, and we're gonna be looking at future amendments to the parking section of our zoning ordinance for that.
Basically, a lot of the low-speed vehicles now, golf carts, are what you're thinking of, if you can't get to it with a golf cart, probably don't need.
Like we saw on Greeno Road, in other words, we're not legally, can't drive along that.
Yeah, well, yeah, you can't get on, that's illegal, yeah.
Uh, sidewalks, um, there are five handicap spaces that access the site, and it will be accessed with a sidewalk to the building. The lighting applicant meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance, mechanical equipment is screened, dumpster location, garbage is collected in a commercial dumpster located on the north side of the building, with a dumpster enclosure of brick with two swing gates. Stormwater, there's a stormwater conveyance system on the west side of the property, signs shall comply with our sign ordinance, be approved by code enforcement, and I believe a sign plan has already been submitted to them. The utilities is working, the applicant is working with the appropriate utilities, water, sewer, and gas, they are all available there at the site, electrical asked that the transformer pad to be screened, they have, there's a easement, electrical easement shown for where power will be coming into the site, I'll show that to you at the next case. ADA requirement shall be met, a traffic study for this development was not required, but traffic will come off of Hoyle onto an internal access road, and with Hoyle, Hoyle right now is the southern portion of the reserve, another project to the north. That road is going to be under construction and going to be built before a CO for this building is released. Hoyle Avenue must be completed, they're fully, fully aware of that, I just wanted to point out that they're not gonna be using the, the dirt drive that goes down there now to get to this development, there's already, already plans that have been, been looked at and reviewed to upgrade Hoyle, Hoyle Avenue. Staff's recommendation is approval with conditions of SR 22.02. Clarify, all utility easements are on private property, screen the transformer pad, coordinate site access with Hoyle Avenue improvements to the north, and disregard condition number four.
Okay.
And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff and the engineer of record, we have Patrick Garsteki and Gary Coles with us on behalf of Coles Murphy and Glover.
Any questions for staff at this time?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
For be either engineers or staff, last month, we had discussion about that intersection on Greeno Road. Intersection of Dyer, Greeno Road, and Hoyle. And now, we've got this one, which I, I mean, I agree, this particular project doesn't, traffic study, okay, fine, you're gonna have every minute, but by the time you get folks coming out of the retirement facility, you add to those here, the intersection at, at Dyer, Hoyle, and Greeno Road is a train wreck. There is absolutely no way, these people are gonna go out across two lanes of highway where they're doing about 60 miles an hour, and there's, there's no, there's no room in the median for a car to get out there to, in this case, for example, to turn a left. I mean, it's just not, I come out of Dyer a lot, and I find myself having to straddle that, 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 uh, traffic hump in the middle of the, of the highway to be able to get my truck out of the road, either for traffic coming south or for traffic going north. It, it ain't gonna work, and I, I'm not in favor of this until something's done about that. Now, whether ALDOT would ever approve of another traffic light that close to the one right there at Gafer, I doubt it, I think they have a limitation, isn't that right? They have a limitation, engineers, they have a limitation on distance between traffic lights for ALDOT?
There, yes, there is.
Okay.
We actually made an application for a project, it was denied this year, but we'll be submitting again for Valanta, a light there on Greeno coming out, so we do suspect that we'll be a light at that intersection at some point in the future.
At, at, at Valanta. Let's see, okay, I understand, but the number, but the number of people that utilize, now are gonna be utilizing Hoyle and Dyer, with the church down the way on Dyer, and all the people that, that go down Dyer trying to get to the school, which is down on Bishop Road, um, I, I'm just, I'm telling you, it, it's a, it's a disaster looking for a place. And it's gonna be, it's gonna really be a problem when the, when the, the retirement facility's built, and this one is built, and then you've got, what, three other additional lots that are gonna be a part of, of this, that's coming in the next, the next, the next, um.
Yes, and more no, not three, there'll be one additional lot.
I'm sorry, what?
There'll be one additional lot for potential, for potential development.
But there's four lots in it, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, well, same thing, but you're not gonna have another exit, I wouldn't imagine, everybody's gonna come out Hoyle.
There's, no, there's another exit, uh, there'll be contacts, live oak on the bottom.
My point, my point is, and I'll go back to, I guess it was, it was Corinne and Clarice that was talking about, you know, getting ahead of the curve, and the curve is, the curve's already there, it's, it is not an acceptable intersection there now, it's gonna be absolutely horrible, and somebody's gonna get killed there probably within the first month. People do not drive 30 miles an hour on Greeno Road.
So for traffic and access, put the site plan back on the screen real quick, I'm gonna use the landscape plan, it's a little clearer, clearer to see, but there, there's an internal drive that comes in, that's an ingress egress easement, and at future development on that parcel to the south, and this is zoomed in too far to see it, but live oak abuts the parcel to the south, so there'll be a continued, potentially continued loop to where you could either enter on Hoyle and then go further south to get out on live oak, or vice, vice versa. So the point of, point of ingress egress for this site potentially isn't always going to be Hoyle Avenue.
You'd also be able to cut through to Valanta.
And, and let me, I think I know what the, I don't know if you can see on that one.
If you go straight across from Hoyle, that's Dyer.
From, is, is the main concern someone coming out of Hoyle taking a left across the turn lane?
Amen, brother.
Yeah.
Or coming out of Dyer and taking a left to go south.
Which, none of his worries.
And, no, it doesn't, because that's a turn lane, and you can't make that turn, but I think that is something we can, have, y'all had that conversation with, with ALDOT?
That's gonna be, yeah, we, we gotta, yeah.
Should be a right turn only.
Yeah, and, and I think that's, that's an easy solution to make, you know, this is kinda one of those tough ones, and that tough one, again, working with ALDOT, that's their role.
Yeah, but, you can't keep using that, but.
It's an excuse, I mean, 'cause at some point, we've gotta do some, like, I know our hands are kinda tied, but at some point, we've gotta hold them accountable, I mean, 'cause are we just gonna sit and let?
Seems to me that the city ought to be involved in, in, in the conversations with ALDOT and whatever engineers are, are involved in the projects like this. The issue is not whether you've got a traffic light there, the median there is not wide enough for you to get a vehicle across two lanes of traffic and into a safe zone, so you can either go straight across on the Dyer, or to turn left if you're coming out of here, or vice versa, coming out of Dyer, getting into the median in a safe zone where you're not gonna get whacked, and then, and then turn left to go south.
And, and if you look at the stripe, and I think you can see it on the area there, that is not intended to be a cut through, that's the turn lane, turning left on to Valanta, which by the nature of that means you would be coming across. Now, what we've looked at on a couple of the proper projects, bump being one of, striping sometimes is not enough, because people will drive across that, even if the, the striping says not a cut through, it's a turn lane. So potentially, I think, working with ALDOT could get some, some kind of physical barrier that people won't hop curbs.
A grassy median with the tree there, or something like that, if you wanted to, but.
And, and that's what you see is to the south, but it tapers as that turn lane on Valanta.
Well, you know, it's kinda interesting that we're here today, 'cause when, when we were, you know, had the money and were doing those, the people who owned the property wouldn't, you know, kinda raise tech and wouldn't let that project that Dick Charles was doing continue on to put the grassy median, you know, through the middle of that, what we called suicide lane, because they wanted to make sure that in the future, that the property, if they were to remarket it, you know, people could get in and out of it, i.e. here we are today. But I don't think we have the authority to deny it, Chris is not here, I would like to ask him if he was, but I don't think we have the authority to deny it based on that, but we could probably throw in a right turn only exit that would cure the problem. I think eventually, people will be able to go through the retire, retirement community and get over to Valanta, um, you know, go out some other ways.
They're not gonna gate that, it's, it's not gonna be gated?
No.
I just think, I, I, you know, I don't think we have the, it's not about denying, I think we, I think we're a little bit out of order for some reason here, we're, we're putting all these on 98, and, and, and I think the city has to do a better job of communicating with ALDOT with all this coming, and getting these things done, you know, but.
Yeah, good luck on that.
I know, but, I mean, I, well, you got, I mean, you know, um, yeah, but that's, it's, it's a lot. Yeah, I love the urology, there's nothing against the project, it's just I see a lot of, you know?
If that were, we could certainly, if they move more of the permitting.
Well.
Steve, ALDOT, we can, we can certainly, make it, the UCD choose to make that a condition of approval.
I think so.
And we, this will go to the city council, so hopefully we can have a, 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 get the city.
I think to further, the biggest, biggest picture is what I see is, everything that enters and exits off of 98 now with the amount of traffic should only be one way. Like you, you, either if you're coming out of the new Chick-fil-A, you can only go right, you, coming out of the urologist, you can only go right, and you gotta go up and around a block. Maybe it'll alleviate some traffic off of 98, diverting it for a few minutes.
Well, like, when I leave, when I go over to, like, Plantain, Plantation Boulevard, when I go to the home builder's office over there, or one of those banks, or over to Plantation Point, oftentimes, I'll cut through the Piggly Wiggly parking lot and come out on Fairhope Avenue, or I'll just loop back the other way and come out on Fairhope Avenue that way, or loop back and go, you know, to, to Gafer there, you know, if I have to make a left turn, if I make a right turn, I just go that way, but, you know?
You know, all the years that we've all been here, what's the one thing that everybody has been so concerned about Greeno Road? Airport Boulevard, right? Always, how many times you heard about Airport Boulevard and Greeno Road? But the reality is, every time we, we have a, a, a development, and we are allowing that development to access Greeno Road itself, without some kind of a, a, uh, plan, traffic plan, oh, well, man, I just drew a blank, street, it's off of, name of the street, come on.
A frontage road.
Frontage road.
Yeah, but Greeno, Airport Boulevard has a frontage.
It does now, but it didn't used to, when it was really a horrible, horrible place.
And all the tenants that we, for 23 years, were about what Greeno Road looks like, is being met here, even the, the things that we tried to accomplish.
Yeah, I mean, the 20-foot buffer and the bottleneck.
The landscape, everything there is.
The building up front, instead of the, and the parking in the back, I mean, they meet everything that we asked for, as far as trying to keep it from looking like Greeno Road, as far as the traffic goes.
Well, traffic is.
I mean, it's just coming.
It's a big deal, I like, I mean, if you, y'all, y'all, uh, engineer guys got any suggestions? Gary?
Well, there's lots of suggestions you can make. A right-hand turn's one, and you can do that, obviously, we all know striping won't work, but you'll have to put in the little concrete piece that makes you go to the right until you get some young guy who's just gonna jump over it, like we used to do when we were kids. Uh, you, you could go out, and we couldn't see Patrick just looking at it, but there's that strip of curb going towards the north to block the turn lane from the. but there's that strip of curb going towards the north to block the turn lane from the southbound lanes. You could remove a piece of that to allow people, if you wanted to, to make a left-hand turn. Doesn't sound like y'all are interested in a left-hand turn, but you could pull out and enter into the turn lane, cause that's a long turn lane to get all the way to the north of Valanta. You could do that and allow people to pull out there and then to pull over when the, the time is right to access the northbound lanes. In the future, though, to some extent, a lot of folks, like, Lee, like you were talking about, are gonna come out the drive, go back down to Live Oak, then they can come, you can even go back to the west there and then come down to Gaffer where you have a light, or you can go west on Gaffer to go back towards town. So, there's gonna be a lot of areas there that you can, that you can get out of the property or into the property the back way. The reserve, that entrance on the Hoyle from there, from, from their property and their development is not gonna be their primary means of ingress egress. So there shouldn't be a lot of traffic down here on that south side.
I mean, that's the thing, we can't control Aldott, but that's why we have our tenants of connectivity that we really stand by and require these, you know, properties to be connected to each other.
We make a condition that says right turn only and Aldott says that doesn't work.
Right.
In their corridor, they're gonna take it.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's just the reality.
Sure.
But I do think a right turn only here is, meets the intent of how they've striped the road, how that, that works with the turn lane plan. And I don't think there'll be a problem with that and we can make sure there's actually a physical barrier there.
Yeah, well, and maybe that's, maybe that's the case just from the standpoint, like you said, that anybody coming into the urology place is perhaps gonna go south and get on Live Oak and so they're not gonna try to get out on Hoyle and get across that, that disaster area and, and get out of the way. Uh, if you got a right only at Hoyle, then it's not gonna be that many people, especially if this entrance from the, what do they call it, the reserve?
The reserve, yeah.
The reserve, if that's not gonna be their prime, uh, primary point of ingress egress, then maybe it won't make any difference and a right only would work.
This won't be like Chick-fil-A, unlike Chick-fil-A, that, that, most of these guys are gonna be our age and they're not gonna wanna make that left turn.
Young guys, huh?
Yeah, yeah, young guys. They're not gonna wanna try to make that left turn out of there. The other thing that, that to consider is y'all were talking about a future light at Valanta. That is gonna, I, I know they won't be synced, you can sync lights to where you gap the time gap in between those two, between there and Gaffer. But that will give you a, a significant break in traffic from either direction at the given time. It'll be a whole lot different than what's there today when you have a traffic light at Valanta. Significantly different.
Um, one other comment that I've got on this, the, um, I was looking at the, you've got two spaces basically with the, um, on the handicapped. And I mean, I know you meet the ADA requirements and this is just a comment for what it's worth, nothing, I'm expecting us to put in a motion. But you've got basically two handicapped parking spaces that have a space for a ramp to open in. And what happens so often is people that don't have ramp, uh, vehicles park in those and then somebody that comes in with the ramp vehicle can't use the other, um, parking spaces. So my suggestion, since you've got more parking than you need, might be to put, you know, being a, a, you know, doctor's office that's, you know, seeing, you know, people, might be to put another, uh, two more, you know, take two of these handicap spaces out and put two more in that, you know, actually have a ramp, uh, space between them. Or, you know, when you, uh, set, set this up to put, you know, ramp vans only. Otherwise, so many people will take those spaces up and then the people with the ramp vans don't have anywhere to park.
Right, I, I think we could put ramp van only for sure.
All right, any other questions for the developer? All right, thank you very much. All right, this is not a public hearing, but would anybody from the public wish to speak? All right, commissioners?
Well, when do we add the right turn only if that's what we wanna do?
You would do that with the motion and say, I, I'd like to, you know, recommend approval to city council subject to staff recommendations as well as a right turn only.
Well, I, I would certainly like to make the motion in that regard.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve subject to staff recommendations and adding that, uh, coming out on Hoyle will be right turn only. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously. Uh, next item on the agenda, deja vu all over again, subdivision Fairhope Urology, Greeno Road.
So this is a four-lot minor subdivision on the piece of property that we were just looking at. Uh, just a little bit of history, um, so the property was rezoned, uh, January eighth, twenty eighteen. Uh, ZCK seventeen point oh seven. Uh, on your screen, on the left-hand side is actually, uh, I took that from the staff report that was created then for it, uh, has outlined in red the portions of the property to be rezoned to B two. On the right side of your screen, uh, I have the lots, lots numbered and color-coded, uh, kinda for an easier visual on that aerial overlay where lots one and four, uh, and that pink hue are the B two portions. Lots two and three are the residential portions, uh, similar image that we saw for the informal review. On your screen is the plat, um, there's lots of lines on here. So again, I added on top, uh, just some darker lines to delineate what those property lines were. Got the site data table on the left. For lot two, there is a, lot two and three, there's a drain easement called out. Um, so for this site, the water is captured from the water coming off of Hoyle, coming from the north and coming from the site. It will come down lot two into lot three and continue naturally, uh, as it has been. So for that, since we're doing a minor subdivision on this, that portion of the lot is under a drain easement. You'll see at the bottom portion of that same lot three, there is a fifty-foot drain easement, um, that is owned by Aldott. That's just an easement, so nothing can be placed there either. The small, what looks like a triangular portion is labeled as dedicated green space for the development. So Art, to your point of, we're creating four lots, where there can be four other developments, as we're creating four lots, but the number of lots that are actually buildable are actually only going to be two. Lot number four, the southern portion, um, that is, that is left open, that could be built on. That is where the, uh, development we just saw, where they would connect to that existing road that is up there. You can see that there is a, that twenty-five foot ingress and egress on lot two. That is the connection point for where it would connect on lot four for future, um, for future development. Per the subdivision regulations, it meets the criteria outlined in the subdivision regulations. Uh, staff's recommendation is for approval of case SD twenty-two point oh nine, Fairhope Urology. Again, this is a minor subdivision with simultaneous preliminary and final plat approval. And be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for staff at this time? Um, I'll go ahead with that, thank you. Mike, I'll go ahead in that case and open the public hearing at this time. Anybody from the public wish to speak? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Motion, Mr. Chairman, case SD twenty-two oh nine, Fairhope Urology, uh, for lot, minor subdivision, I move that we approve.
Second.
Well, motion is second to approve. There are no staff recommendations, first time in about three years. Any further?
Right turn only on Hoyle?
And any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay.
Do we need to talk about Hoyle or not?
We gotta cut, we gotta. Mr. Lett, please come get his, uh, microphone.
We'll try to get that worked out with Aldott before it reaches council meeting.
Hey, do I need to recuse myself on this? The single stat, the single tax staff said if we denied the Starbucks, they were all gonna quit.
Well, that depends, do you get free coffee when you go to Starbucks?
Is that a conflict of interest?
Free coffee?
I don't, I don't go, I can't afford it, my wife can, but I can't. Okay, good, then we're fine.
So this is case SR twenty-two point zero three. It is a site plan review for Starbucks at the Eastern Shore Shopping Center. Um, this is zone B two. It's located on the southeast corner of Fairhope Avenue and Highway ninety-eight. Larry Smith was, with S.E. Civil was here as the engineer. The site, the zoning is on the left, aerial on the right, um, familiar, familiar project, uh, very visible site. The site plan on the screen is the lot that was created in a, in a minor subdivision a few months ago. And this is the layout, so just kinda running through some high, high points on this. This is an asphalt parking lot all the way up to the property line. Being on Greeno, it's a required twenty-foot landscape strip that is being provided, so they'll be removing the asphalt. Uh, we'll be able to handle, manage some of the stormwater through that and, and landscape plans as you'll see. The internal drive and, um, Clarice, this was one of those that we also looked at with a drive-through. No, 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 I, I wanna show you kinda, and, and there's comments in the staff report from Aldott. So the conversation about how this impacts is one we have from the, from early on and was the first comment, so if you see here, I think it's in your staff report.
If you gotta keep talking, can you go up to the, to the boy right there?
Yeah, it is hard to hear with the, with the conversation going. Yes, thank you. The comments from Aldott, they liked that, they provided a double lane there. Uh, and one of the, even from the very first, uh, meeting we had, it was, okay, if there is backup, it needs to happen into the parking lot since it's shared parking. So, a lot of conversations and revisions do go into those, uh, and Aldott is, is okay with this access. Uh, the building is shown here, you know, there, there was a note on here that buildings, uh, are for reference only. Well, the whole purpose of our site plan is to be reviewing buildings and materials. So I do wanna make a comment that if the building and architecture changes significantly, then we might send it back. So I hope they have this plan and, and move forward, uh, unless there's comments from the, the commission or, and/or city council. The landscaping plan, as we mentioned, there is a landscaping plan approved, uh, provided, uh, has been reviewed by our city horticulturists. There were no zero, there were no heritage trees on site, it's an asphalt parking lot. However, there were two trees in the right-of-way, uh, pine trees that were requested to be removed. The horticulturist has looked at those and approved those plans. Those, uh, that permit will be submitted with the, uh, building permit and the fees for those right-of-way trees, so those can be used to plant trees in another location. The plan is, uh, as you see on the screen, uh, this is the layout for the landscape plan.
Hunter, where is this on the, I mean, I've looked through this and I drove.
I was just about to ask a question.
Okay, let's go back up here.
We've got all this pink stuff and, and this little thing here, but we don't have anywhere that shows us where it's going in the parking lot.
Good point, good point. Um, so for reference between this, can you see my mouse on the screen?
Mm-hmm, I don't see a arrow. I don't see a mouse.
The, the, the arrow between this entrance here and this one.
Okay.
So it, it lays out.
See how they have two entrances?
Mm-hmm.
It's nice.
That's the one with that huge sign.
Yeah, that's the sign right there.
Yeah, so, yeah, the sign you're seeing sits in, in this median here. And we do have, I can, I think we have a larger. So, uh, parking, when we, when we get looking at parking, the, uh, parking chart on the screen was for this particular site. So ten spaces were required, um, and the applicant is actually proposing too many parking spaces. However, this is within an existing shopping center and shared parking, uh, is, is, makes some common sense. Uh, and we do require a shared parking agreement for that.
Is the same owner gonna own this as owns the shopping center?
Uh, at, at this time, they do. I don't know if there's any intentions to sell that in the future, but the shared parking agree, it, it, now that it's a separate piece of land, it can't be, can be, but if we have a shared parking agreement, that would, regardless if it change, transfers hands, it would still be in, in, uh, effect.
I was just wondering why the subdivision is done.
So the, now, there's a, there's a conflict. So we have a conflict between parking requirements and then some characteristics, uh, of the, the actual site. So shared parking includes all the parking for the shopping center. Three hundred and sixty-one parking spaces are required and barely meeting that. Um, actually adding some spots behind the building to meet that. The zoning ordinance also has the, uh, when non-conforming use, when a use changes or is added to, the parking landscaping driveways shall be brought up to code. So that triggers, uh, the landscape ordinance, you know, that has, uh, plant islands and, and trees in the parking lot. Um, so there's a conflict here and, and staff needs some guidance on how to approach this because if you meet all of the tree ordinance, you're not gonna have any of the parking. If you meet all the parking requirements, you're not gonna be able to do any of the requirements of the tree ordinance. We kinda think there's a happy median there, but, but need some guidance because ultimately that's gonna require, um, so, not meeting some of our code.
Well, you know how I feel on that, being on Greeno Road. Um, you know, I've never seen that parking lot even close to full. I mean, you know, we don't have a Starbucks there, but if it only requires ten, um, you know, I'd much rather see that, you know, that's the last, you know, that's the biggest eyesore on Greeno Road, nothing personal toward the owners, but I mean, it's just, you know, it's what we try to get away from, you know? Concrete with no islands, no trees, no nothing. Um, you know, and of course, it's the first shopping center that was there, you know? Um, that property was bought for, I think, nineteen thousand dollars and, um, the lease was transferred for that and that was back when you couldn't pay any money for single tax land, so they, they paid an additional two hundred and forty thousand dollars for a broken-down tractor that Mr. Cordy had out there in the, in the front. So that was how the land transferred back to get that original Winn-Dixie shopping center there. But I, I would think, you know, the more that can be done to, you know, gussy that up at this time would be, you know, cause I mean, the one thing that makes that shopping, I mean, everything that makes that even look anywhere like it's in Fairhope is everything on the city right-of-way, and so we're letting them cut two pine trees down off the right-of-way, you know, which is gonna take some of that, you know, canopy down. So I would strongly feel that we need to, you know, if we're gonna err, err on the side of, you know, getting some islands and some trees and some landscaping in there.
This is the best opportunity that we will have had now to eliminate what I think is one of the big box eyesores, which is just a, a sea of parking of asphalt. To eliminate, to eliminate it, not, not eliminate it, but to, to, to reduce it, to really make it aesthetically attractive and do something with all that asphalt. Uh, I, I will ask, Larry, when he gets up here, I'm sure he's gonna come up, but I'm sure they're gonna tear all the asphalt up and, and probably redo it during construction. But it seems like if there ever was a place for, for, uh, pervious, uh, 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 pavers and, and other things that can accommodate that and really break that, that mass of asphalt up, this would be the time to do it. And it's, uh, whether they get a, and, and I don't see where, where there's really a big conflict, or what am I missing? If they get a, a statement that says, yeah, we got shared parking, three hundred and sixty-one spaces, then, and they only need ten, okay, so put a bunch of, put, put some trees, some islands, some greenery and, and bust the asphalt up and make it look like a million dollars and, well, probably today, that's not enough, is it?
Ten million.
Now, two, ten million, make it look like ten million dollars. Anyway, the, the point is, it's, it's a good opportunity now for them to really step up and help. It's the main intersection of City of Fairhope outside of downtown.
And, and I don't think the whole parking area will be repaved.
No.
But certainly, we, we did have a, a striping plan. Re-strip, if you've been through, it's kind of an unsafe area, you can't even see where the, the striping is. So, uh, with that said, it's, it's a question of how, how do we wanna handle that? Are we just gonna say, put a parking island on each, or, or planting island on the end of each parking row? I mean, meet the tree ordinance exactly? We wanna see revisions, you wanna see revisions between now and plan, and city council meeting?
That's what, you get paid the big bucks for.
What, what can we ask for?
That's what, you get paid the big bucks for another, but I would say.
What can we ask for, you tell us our options?
I'd say require the, to meet the tree ordinance, and if they have an issue with that, then resubmit.
Can we see something?
You can, you can ask for this to come back as revisions to the planning commission before you send it to the city council, if that's what you prefer.
You know, I, I hear.
Send it to the tree committee.
I, I heard, I guess it was in one of our meetings, that, that like, the Dollar General has got like eight or 10 different, different development exteriors for which they can build one of their buildings. Starbucks have that, or it's got to, it got to. And the reason that I asked that is because, and, and this is just my opinion, but this is ugly.
It's modern.
Yeah.
It's modern, you, you catch up.
What's funny, we sat with the comp plan team today and they, you know, they're from out of town and they're kind of looking at what makes Fairhope. And that is materials of building is one of their, you know, kind of the wood, wood siding, metal roofs, you know, things like that.
Yeah, it was modern.
Tell them that you want coastal, you want, you want coastal.
I don't want it all looking the same, but I mean, you know, it's, it just kind of looks.
You've got to wear black if you go get coffee.
It looks sterile.
It looks like it should be in the Atlanta airport.
Yeah, it looks sterile to me, yeah.
It's mod and hipster and, you know, it's all those things.
Well, you know, us old guys, we ain't very modern hipster.
All right, just wrap up, the, the sidewalk is, there is, they are providing a connection to the existing sidewalk. It does really pinch in one of the compact spaces, so we'll make sure we're not in conflict with a parking space. We want to leave that pathway clear. Signage, they're going to meet the sign ordinance with one nuance. There is an existing space on the, the pylon sign. So instead of putting an additional monument sign out there, using that space. And then we'll be limited to the, the wall signs, but we'll meet the sign ordinance. Dumpster location, meeting the requirements there. Utilities have been reviewed. The only real thing is there's a, there's a couple of options for how, how to bring electrical into the site. So they'll be coordinating that with electric supervisor. Will be associated costs to bring that and aid to constructions and any applicable easements from our utilities. ADA requirements shall be met. There is a, I believe an email, not a letter, from Aldott that confirms with what Larry with SC Civil did convey to us that access is, is acceptable and another permit will not be required. Some drainage permits to, to convey the water into the right-of-way will be required. So we have this conflict, so I guess this is, other than that issue, staff did have a recommendation of approval with four conditions, but want, want some guidance on how you'd like to proceed to.
When they redid the Hardees to the Baumhowers, did we require any landscaping on that?
They did some screening, but the, that was more of a remodel that might not have triggered because there's a 30, kind of a 30%, you know.
That wasn't 30%.
That wasn't 30% of the overall. Yep, now this is an actual new use.
Yeah.
So new building.
Well, I don't know, my, my feeling is that that one, the other one was probably 30%. I mean, if you look at the money they spent compared, you know, if you took the money of what the building was valued and took 30% of that, I think they were a little over 30 probably on that.
And that can't. Physical. And I wasn't, Mike, were you here when that one first came through? I, I was not, so.
I may be overstepping.
Probably need to let the, I want to see if Larry has anything to say or, before we.
Thank you all, as, as Hunter was saying, first off, as far as the landscaping goes, right now we are proposing to remove a 20-foot strip of landscape, or asphalt along Greeno Road and replacing that with landscaping. We did work with Arborist to locate the best place for the tree removal to occur. We originally had another location which was going to impact a larger tree, so we ended up impacting one of the smaller pine trees that was there.
Is there another cut going through there or?
The, the removal of the tree is. It's, it's for the storm pipe going through the north section. We ended up shifting the, yeah, then we ended up shifting the ditch on the left that was carrying the stormwater further north and ended up removing one of the smaller pine trees versus one of the larger pine trees. And so as I was saying here, right now, this whole area that's all being landscaped all through here is all asphalt. So that view corridor that we were originally talking about with removing one tree, this is all currently asphalt right now. And so all that is new proposed landscaping up along Greeno Road. Also, all of these landscaped areas here, all these landscape islands right here, here, here. And, oh, you can't see it, but also within the parking lot here and here, those are all asphalt parking spaces right now. So what we have tried to do is along the corridor of Greeno Road and where we're impacting the site, we have come in and put landscape islands. If we went through the entire parking lot and put landscape islands on all the terminal places, we would not meet the zoning ordinance for the required amount of parking for the entire shopping center. 361 is the required when we look at a shared use. And we actually did a, a parking study that we provided, Hunter, and, because if you took the sheer numbers, the parking is actually up in the 400s that's required. But by looking at the timing of the different uses, we can come up with a total of 361 spaces. And so that's what we're going to meet with the 19 that we're providing for the shared parking. Well, the entire shopping center, including putting some parking in the rear, will come up to 361. So if we went through and put in a, a landscape island on each of them per the city standards, I'm saying that's what's reality, but by the city standards, we would not meet the parking. We'd have to get some form of variance for that. And so.
That's a win-win.
What's that?
That's a win-win.
How wide are these little islands on the west, on the, on the east side, Larry?
On the east side, those are approximately six foot. As you can see, they vary, the northern ones closer to eight, the bottom one's six foot.
Is that right on the property line?
That's actually off of the property and on the rest of the shopping center.
You make them any wider and put trees in them?
If we did, we'd lose parking back to the same reference, but I mean.
You'd lose.
We'd lose one, two, six parking spaces to make them wider. Because right now the other parking spaces are the minimum width.
You couldn't make them wider going to the west?
That is the drive aisle for the shopping center.
Wait, 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 it's a what? It's a drive-out? Oh, that's how you go.
That's how you get across, around.
So the, the two arrows up here in the northeast corner, yeah, right there. So the one on the left is for your drive-through, right?
Yes, this is.
And the other arrow is for getting out of the.
If you, if you come into the shopping center and want to come around and not go through the actual Starbucks. This is the delivery area here, so the drive aisle and that's the dumpster there. So the drive aisle right here is throttled down. So we could in theory on these two, bring it this way some more because once the vehicle gets around.
Anything like that would be good, I mean, you could put, put some, put a, put a tree that's going to stay there.
Okay.
Put a live oak tree in there.
Yeah, we can, we can make that revision.
What about, what about busting up some of the other asphalt and putting some pervious stuff?
Yes.
The, we do have pervious proposed within our development here. I can't speak for outside, we're not proposing anything outside of the.
That whole parking area right there, you're talking about doing pervious?
Not the entire, no, we've got 25% of the parking spaces as impervious, or as pervious.
So Hunter, does the part that's subdivided here meet the tree ordinance and the?
This, this part does, with this shared, I mean, to look at this another way, there, there's a shared parking agreement required to meet the parking. As Larry said, strictly, there's over 400 parking. So shared parking, well, that implies that we're, I, I think the planning commission and/or city council will have some leeway to bring that change of views to bring the whole parking lot into compliance. I think that's the intent of that section, so, you know, I, I think there's a middle ground. I, I, I do believe that meeting the full intent of the tree ordinance might be a challenge in that parking lot and still providing drive aisles and parking, but I do think you can get partially there and, and have, have not, not quite 361, but make a big impact.
You ever seen 361 cars in that parking lot?
Hey, Ally, what is the date of our next meeting?
It should be April 4.
April 4?
Just, just out of curiosity, if, if, if we didn't go the shared parking route, if they, if they just reduced down to the 10 they needed.
I, I still think the, it's, it's all.
I, I, I wonder if we ought to just postpone this one month. I, you know, I, I agree with Hunter, I think requiring the entire parking lot to be brought up would be, you know, just too much, especially since we've allowed it to be subdivided out. But if we could find a little bit of middle ground and some low hanging fruit that wouldn't cost too much for the developer to make this, you know, wouldn't cost the developer too much, but just some of the low hanging fruit that might make it look a lot nicer and would work in, it might even help, you know, their business, you know, the nicer shopping centers and things look in Fairhope, usually the more cars that get attracted there and the more people that go there.
For the subdivision that happened, there was a condition that the parking would be reviewed at time of future development. So you have, you have, we're thinking about the parking when it went through the subdivision, just not knowing what was going to be on that park that was required at that time.
And just, just out of curiosity, I wish Chris was here in which if we do hold this over, we can ask him the question, but I know my own personal experience with my office is parking, a parking variance, something that the board of adjustments can even grant us.
And I think the instrument there, because there is shared parking, because it, it may not be that a variance is required, but there is an exception for shared parking agreements that the planning commission and/or city council are the authority making that decision. I think that's where the allowance can be met. You know, the, the flip side of that is you don't have to approve a shared parking agreement. And if maybe, maybe they're just not parking enough to meet the, the project. So if you can't get 100, 400 parking spaces, it could just be flat out denial. I don't think that's what we're, we're certainly not bringing.
Because I like a, you know, you know, like Art said down there, I've never seen that parking lot have any issues with parking in it. And I mean, this will obviously take some of the footprint, but still, you know, with the different times that different businesses have, you know, you got a restaurant that's going to be busier at night, you know, and Starbucks is busier in the morning. I mean, it's just they, I would have never seen really much in the way of issues, this.
Yeah, and if you look across, look across the street at where, what was, what was the grocery store that was across the street? On the east side, west side of Greeno.
Oh, where Dollar Tree is now?
No.
Oh, wait.
Where Guave and all that is. Food World, Food World, you know, that was kind of the same thing, but I mean, that one's been, that, that whole concept of that parking, that, that development changed. I mean, the facility we're sitting in here right now here was Adel Shamps once upon a time. So it'll either be a bulldozer when it gets, when it gets so valuable that nobody can touch it, there'll be a bulldozer in that shopping center or a massive renovation that won't be anything like it is now.
Right.
If, if it get, if it gets held over, I mean, I'm not going to pick, I'm not, I don't want to pick, be involved in anything to tell you how to, what, what the building needs to look like. I'd just like to see them, see the different ones and find the one that's the most modern.
Can, can I ask a, a question? Because timing on this deal is way past it, and this is really a recommendation for city council. Can your recommendation be to city council that y'all are approving it with a condition that some, and I know Councilman Martin will be there to be able to, to champion this on, but they're already, on their agreements are already way, way past due and so.
Yeah, I think we can, I think we can work something out.
I think there's a lot of room to. Cory can be a bulldog.
I think there's a lot of room here to come to a win-win situation.
And, and, I'm, sorry, go ahead.
With recommendations.
With recommendations. And so then I guess if I can get some guidance as to, because as Hunter's saying, if we went straight strictly by the landscape ordinance, there's going to be divisional islands, not incap islands. I mean, there's, there's a lot in this large of a parking lot, so if I can get an idea of what you're looking.
Somebody just to look and figure out where you could put a few islands that would be, you know, give the biggest screening for the overall, you know, like I said, the low hanging fruit, like, kind of like where y'all were looking at, but doing those six-foot buffers, a few areas, you know, those could go to eight feet and maybe put a tree here and a tree there.
Yeah, just something to salt.
Just a little bit of that.
How about closer to, because you got some kind of unique, the, the drive-al there, the northern part of the property doesn't have 90-degree parking in front, but you do towards the south. So that drive, you know, it's really wide in places. How about those end caps closer to the building or end spaces closer to the building? That actually could help some of the crosswalk where the, the.
That is an awkward one on the north, so just a few little lots and it's like that, just to kind of, just like I said, just some of the low hanging fruit, make it look a little better and probably make the shopping center more valuable anyway.
How would we make a motion to? Could you, Larry?
Make a motion subject to staff recommendations and, and applicant adding acceptable landscape features to current shopping center.
Acceptable to the city council or not?
Cory's trying to ask you something.
What, what Cory, Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Larry, when you come back or whatever we do here, could you have some examples, you know, visuals?
Yeah, but if, if we move on to the city council.
He's talking about the city council.
Yeah, I would hope to have a, a plan in place by the city council for y'all to actually review versus just discussing a hypothetical.
That'd be great.
All right. Well, somebody. Was this public hearing? This is not a public hearing, no.
Just to, you can add that one, but I will, we didn't read the conditions, so if you don't mind. Shared parking agreement was a, a condition that staff recommended for approval. Just the, the tree removal permit and fee shall be provided at time of building. Assigned plan shall be submitted via citizen service to code enforcement for review and approval and electric services shall be coordinated at the time of permitting with aid to construction costs and applicable easements. Final plans for all utilities and any associated aid to construction costs shall be approved by the respective superintendent prior to submittal of a building permit.
Somebody can make a motion subject to staff recommendations and working with staff to add some more landscape.
Yeah, that was the motion I was going to make.
All right, Art made a motion to, to approve, to, to recommend subject to staff recommendations and work, working with staff to add some more landscape features. Do, does Art have a second?
Second.
All right, have a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Mr. Chairman?
Pass this unanimously.
Can I ask for a three-minute recess?
Yes.
Way to go.
Okay, three-minute recess. 208, this is a subdivision request, minor subdivision, SG 2208, Jewett Place.
Thank you, Chairman.
Upper Montrose, yes, sir.
This is one acre, it's two-lot minor subdivision. The owner is Donna Elkins, Seth Moore is the applicant in survey for the project. The subject property is shown on the, the zoning map. This is unzoned, this is outside of the city of Fairhope. It is within our planning jurisdiction, so we're reviewing this against the subdivision regulations. And this is, this is a relatively simple one for us. We, we've looked and reviewed, it meets all of the subdivision regulations, requirements except for one. We did get a letter from Baldwin County Highway Department that says they maintain Jewett between second and. We did get a letter from Baldwin County Highway Department that says they maintain Jewett between second and third street. So, as you all know, a subdivision has to front a publicly maintained road. At this time, the road in front of this lot is not a publicly maintained road. It's not a city road, so we can't answer that question. We did receive a couple of letters, I believe those were forwarded to you. So there's also some potentially drainage within that area. Any of that would be resolved, but we recommend, we are recommending denial on this. It could be resolved, but it needs to be resolved with Baldwin County. And once they kind of, they say it is a publicly maintained road, we don't foresee any problems following through with this minor subdivision.
Is there even a road onto it?
Uh, there is a drive, twenty foot paving strip, I believe. It 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 turns into a private, you can, here you go. You see this here? Now, there's, the the county stops maintenance further this way, and then it turns into a private drive onto private property. So it is a public right of way, just not a publicly maintained road.
Okay.
So, and again, if this was resolved with the county and was a publicly maintained road, then they can come back even without waiting the six months.
Now, is it not true, didn't we already talk about this, that the county is wanting to give the city all of the unopened portions of streets and Montrose? And those siblings?
Not not all, just within that one P U D that we've annexed in.
They don't want to give them all, give us all of them?
No, just just within that P U D.
So it's up to the county, if they're gonna, if they're gonna do anything, make that a public road, then the county's gonna, but.
That's true.
So they're not trying to double it over to the city?
Right.
And then the city would be responsible?
No. And and why this kind of gets tricky for us, if if the county requires infrastructure to be built, there's a bonding process. It's no longer a minor subdivision, potentially. So we need their guidance on what they want to do. That could, that could, infrastructure being installed, regardless if it's two lots or two hundred, you have to have a bonding process and maintenance. And we need their guidance on that, so at this time, we can't recommend approval.
All right, thank you, Hunter. Seth, do you have anything you want to add or say at this time?
Right now, what we would like to do is table this till we got clarification from the county, which we've been trying to get. That's what we would like to do, if that's possible.
Okay.
I mean, there's no penalty, but tabling, I don't have a problem with that, I just don't want to linger for a year or so.
Yeah, none of that.
Put a timeframe to know, ninety days to know how long. Even if we could come back as an informal item to extend that, we could, indeed, if there was actually discussion going on with the county, but to know the start date, so we don't end up a year and a half from now, and it's still a case we're holding on to, waiting for something, waiting for something to happen.
How long do you need?
I I would agree with ninety days, just to, and like Mike was saying, if we had to extend it, we'd come before you all and get it extended.
I I think ninety days would be good. I wouldn't be in favor of extending it beyond that, I don't think.
Yeah, I'm making motion to table ninety days.
I got a motion to table for ninety, do I have a second?
Second.
Um, a further discussion, I'd just like to say, I wouldn't, since it's, you know, there's no penalty for a denial, I wouldn't really want to table much further than ninety. I think, you know, find out, we can find out ninety, otherwise, just, you know, deny it and move on and come back if it ever gets, if the road ever gets built there. All right, all in favor of tabling, of of accepting the applicant's request to table ninety days, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, I don't want to be, will be tabled for ninety days.
Thank you.
Um, request of applicant Winston Smith for an informal review of a potentially mixed use development at three oh nine South Ingleside Street. The property is approximately one point five nine acres and is located within the medical overlay district.
I'm gonna let the applicant present this, and just kind of show them a couple of things and kind of give you a precursor. This is a site at three oh nine Ingleside, South Ingleside. Two and a half years ago was rezoned to B three B. At the time, it was to save the house, was going to be a Mexican restaurant. That owner, that plan fell through, and they put, have had the the lot on the market for some time.
You mean, we rezoned something and the plan fell through?
Amazing, isn't it?
Really? Never knew that happening before.
So you can move back and forth on the arrows here. I did overlay your site plan, I think this kind of gives us some clarity on on how that is, but that's your site plan here.
Sure. We made copy, hard copies if anybody wants to. Okay. Hello, my name is Paul Davis, I'm working with the client Winston Smith, and we have been looking at the property here, and I'm gonna go to the overlay. What we're looking to do is do a development on this piece of property. We know it's in the medical overlay district, and what we were trying to do is try to be sympathetic to some of the residential areas around, but also realize it is in the medical overlay district. So, on the property to the north, we have townhomes with the, I think the minimum square footage for a yard is four hundred square feet. We're at four twenty, and we have some parking spaces there, so we have that abutting the residential spot, places to the north. Then we created a large green open space that's sort of T-shaped, so that it goes out on the two streets. And then toward the south side of the property on Ingleside, we have sort of mixed use, where we have commercial, they say, commercial leasable space on the first floor, and then the second floor could be either commercial or residential above. We were thinking to be residential above the smaller units, like a live-work unit, where you might have a sole practitioner that does physical therapy, massage therapy, acupuncture, something that might be still wellness, but maybe a little more non-traditional, where they need a smaller square footage and can't afford to be real close to the hospital, but need to be in that area. And then the two larger spaces, which could be combined into one, whether that becomes either a doctor's office or a sandwich shop. We don't, you know, we're just trying to keep it flexible and open for whatever tenant may come along. And then we've got the large green space that's roughly, we were shooting for the twenty-five percent area of green space there. And then the T-shaped, so that it sort of has one large green space and then a smaller space coming off that could be used for just, you know, maybe these two commercial properties on the bottom might have some windows or doors that open up onto that, and they can enjoy the fresh air. We have parking that runs along Nichols and Ingleside, and we were mimicking the parking that goes up Nichols where they pull in off the street. And then the townhomes have their own parking spaces in the back. So that's kind of what we had laid out, and just kind of wanted to present, get some feedback, see if we're going in the right direction, see if you see anything that causes concern.
I personally think y'all are going the right direction. I usually don't like to comment on informal reviews, because I feel like I've kind of pinned myself in a corner. But conceptually, I really like it, you know, we rezoned that B three B, and every time I've driven by and seen that for sale sign on in the B three B, it's made me cringe, because, you know, my feeling has always been that, you know, there there's a thought, which is not true, that regressive zoning is fine, and if you go from industrial to retail, or retail to residential or what have you, that that it's fine. Who cares, you're aggressively zoning. But the truth is, is, you know, when you had that as a M one zoning, and M one zoning is mostly for eighteen wheelers to be backing up and, you know, pulling into, you know, warehouses and steel buildings and pulling in, unloading and loading, and you've got no real sidewalks and no light poles and, you know, not a lot of, of, you know, pedestrian, you know, features. And then all of a sudden, you allow two restaurants to go in, and you've got people parking over in the mini storage, walking across with no lights through ditches and, you know, through a row with no lines. It's just, you know, it it just is a concern of mine, you know. To me, if we allow, you know, R two to go into a, you know, M one zoning, we ought to say, fine, you can go in, but you've got to put streetlights, sidewalks, and really, you know, improve it up to what a normal, you know, R two zoning would be like, or, you know, multi-occupancy zoning or whatever the zoning is. And here, I think y'all have basically done that. You've got the parking like you would in a retail or, you know, mixed occupancy project. You've got, you know, green space, you've got ingress, egress, and landscape buffers. The landscape buffers on the, you know, north will probably have to be tweaked, and there's some issues you'll have to deal with the staff with. But overall, you know, I don't see where that's gonna have overflow parking, you know, going over in the mini storages and people walking in areas that are unsafe for them to walk. And I think it's, you know, it's very nice, and it kind of takes a little of anxiety out of my stomach, wishing I had that vote back when we, you know, voted to change that zoning, and and I later regretted it, you know.
Do you have a uh 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 estimated view of frontal view of of either your townhomes or anything that you play in with, not?
Yeah, we, and I can, I've got those here, I can show you those, conceptually, yes.
Yeah.
Well, he's in that just for reference, one thing we've already pointed out, that is to the north is residential property, and there will have to be a landscape option here to be your tree, and so the parking gap is by the property.
What are you talking about, going up Ingleside?
There's that that cul-de-sac.
It's just a one street.
Good, thanks. This is townhomes? Looking north, so this would be, this would be Nichols.
Those are just some preliminary ideas that we're looking at materials and kind of an idea of what we're gonna do.
Anybody have anything else they'd like to add?
No, I I like it, personally, just, I mean, just first blush.
I like it, but I'm leery of a parking.
Leery of what, I'm sorry?
Parking. No, just.
On the street?
On the street.
So, and and this is something we've even talked about, you know, there's parking kind of by default on the street, and it's unsafe. Down by warehouse, bakery, and some of those, where people are parking and then people walk behind the cars.
Yeah.
So, you know, while I get a, there there's a, we we do have within the overlays some guidance on building, and actually doing this type of development and having the sidewalks on private property that would be public for accessible creep does help some of that kind of thing, so, you know, there's a, we've had this, that's kind of one of my first critiques, I'm not sure. But when you kind of start, I I kind of warmed up to it, looking at some of the problems down the road. But but again, that's just one of.
I I think maybe like angle parking might be a little bit better.
That's what I was thinking, angled.
As far as to get in and out, not not parallel, because you lose too many. But just like a, an angle where you don't have to, you know, where sometimes, you know, you make a parking space narrow, and if you're going straight back, you have to go across both lanes to get out, where angle parking is pretty simple to get out.
Maybe an angle might be the solution, but you also don't want to park too close to your intersections.
Well, those things, and some green spaces here, and they'll have to be worked with staff, there'll be a few tweaks, of course. But but conceptually.
I like the multi-use.
Is the plaza like an eating area outside?
We were thinking that it could be that, or like if somebody had a yoga studio, they could do stuff outside. We're also thinking, you know, just with COVID, people needing smaller office space, and so we're trying to provide that as well. But we're thinking the large plaza could also, you know, we've got a wide sidewalk, we're thinking vendors, events, food trucks could come in just to sort of make it lively at some time.
Well, I tell you, if you can get, you know, office space in the, you know, fifteen dollar to eighteen dollar, you know, square foot range, you could fill it up very quickly. You'd be amazed how many people call me, and I'm not even a real estate agent, and ask me about office space, and I tell them places where they can call, and they say, man, I've called them, it's thirty-eight dollars square foot. That's amazing.
I'm wearing my other hat today, right now.
Yeah, and I I, and maybe, we, I think we talked about the buffer at the top of the property, and we were just kind of toying with some ideas of, you know, doing the buffer where it's green space with some trees, but trying to let cars park between the trees if we have some event and we need just a little more space, but certainly we're open to feedback on that. We were just trying to, you know, and we made the plaza, you'll see there's a walkway that goes all the way to that section, so if somebody did need to park there, they'd still have a connection to the park. But certainly, we're open to, you know, like the angle parking on the street sounds good, you know, we were just trying to, you know, make the best of the use.
Effectively, it looks real good, but, you know, the staff knows all of those nuances, like whether or not, you probably wouldn't even be allowed to allow an intrusion there, you know, of a car parked in a, just for a random event. Yeah, so we we don't, the tree.
For the buff, transition buffer against residential.
Yeah, and I think just out of respect for the people that have lived there.
Oh, I agree.
I mean, not doing that, because that's disrespectful to have a parking, you know, they're coming in at night, and those people are trying to sleep. Just to respect.
Yeah, and and we didn't know too if, yeah, and that's one reason we wanted the townhouse, we wanted residential on that end of the property, so that it's very similar to what's on the other side.
And I do appreciate, you know, this is, I think, I don't know of any others, but townhomes that actually need our zoning.
I love it.
Again, there's a yard, there's a loading parking, you know, if we run into them.
And there's a demand for townhomes, and there's a demand for houses. The plus.
All right.
Looks nice.
Do you have any more questions for us? Kind of hit on the items that we knew were gonna come up, parking and buffer. Yeah.
I think that's, you know, there's, let's see, your trigger, I'm trying to think procedurally, um, site plan, I'm not sure if you've triggered that.
I I think it will because of the number of townhomes.
What's the square footage?
Of the townhomes, I think about fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred square feet.
Like a three two.
And then the ones up front will be smaller, at least kind of littler.
Studio loft.
Eleven hundred square feet, two ones.
Have you, and basically the numbers, twelve parking, on the street, if you've got twelve or more parking places, you need a tree island. So a few on the corner, maybe, and on the north side of property, and then maybe one more, if I can, if I'm counting right, just having a landscape.
To break it up.
To break it up, you know, for having a tree, street tree there, and another forty tree that would be a good addition.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, appreciate it, everybody.
All right, do we have any old slash new slash red slash blue business? No, that's just informal.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so do want to mention and hope everyone can join us tomorrow night, the comp planning team, we did meet with the contractor on Thursday.
So you want this?
Call me, oh, the answer.
Where's the comp plan meeting group tomorrow?
It will be here in.
Okay.
That will be in the civic center next door here at five thirty. That will be kind of the first draft from Thursday. They have been locked up in a room, working on some ideas to put together, and they'll be presenting those ideas.
What time?
Five thirty at the civic center.
We've got to get, we've got to get Ally on board to do a little bit better job. That thing should be at McSherry's Irish Pub or the brewery. At five thirty on a Tuesday, you know, they got plenty of room in the brewery for that meeting.
We are going to have pizza.
Come on, Ally, let's go.
FY, we we are gonna have pizza tomorrow night, so BYOB, but don't tell us about it. And then one other, just be, uh.
I'm trying to figure out if I can switch around, getting somebody to show some property down at the beach, is it mandatory?
You need me to handle that for you?
Uh, mandatory, no, it's a, but this is one I think you want to be.
I know that.
This is, this is their, actually, the five, four or five months we've been, you know, toiling with all the meetings. This is the first, yes. This is their first presentation of ideas. There's really won't be much feedback, but to see what they're thinking, you know, I I think.
How was the last meeting?
Last Thursday?
I didn't get to make it to that.
Yeah, we, I don't believe any of y'all did.
No, Friday, Thursday, the meeting was Friday.
No, we had, the public design, the charrette was Thursday.
Yeah, but sure, it was Thursday, we'd already been to charrette.
You were on, you were in, coming back from DC. We didn't have a, volume wise, we didn't have a huge turnout, you know, with. Um, we didn't have a, volume wise, we didn't have a huge turnout, you know, with, um, all the kids at the school.
Yeah, everybody was on break.
Baseball started, um, you had a change of events.
Who schedules those?
Well, we schedule those months out, months out, and, and believe me, that was a tough one to try to fit a, a five day window in, the middle of Mardi Gras, arts and crafts, all of those things, so very limited on our, our cho, our selection.
I'm just giving you a hard time.
But, um, we, and we also had a event last night, uh, more informal, at the brewery, Fairhope Brewery, they hosted, um, uh, and we had probably forty people.
Which I wasn't invited to.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you, did you get an invite?
Well, I don't, yeah.
I got an invite, I was at a Bible study.
When you don't come to the design trends, you don't get to come to the brewery. Um, but one other announcement, um, you know, not, not a fun one, but it's going to be, uh, very important for City of Fairhope, Church Street and Fairhope Avenue will be closed from March, uh, March twenty-first. That intersection, uh, approximately targeting forty-five days, so just want to make sure everyone's aware of that.
So, how do we get, um, like, uh, um, our emergency vehicles down Delamar to, and turn around?
And I wish I could answer those details, I was just asked, that's Public Works is really, yeah, there, there's, there's ways to get around, um, and, and detours be going around, I believe, Summit.
Is there any way that we can make the, the little alleyway a two-way, and then also coming out of like the, by Creative Outlet Dance Center, come, be able to come out, so that way we can come in and out?
Uh, no, no offense, I just don't know, that's kind of a question that probably Public Works would, you know, Richard Johnson, maybe check with him, they've been working on the plan for a lot of this, Jessica Walker, but we're just not in the middle of those conversations.
Question, how much is in our purview?
Mm-hmm.
But I've noticed, and I kind of know why, we had a person that just kind of went with, uh, a policeman, a city councilman, a number of years ago, who's no longer with us, and just Xed out a lot of parking spaces. And we had done a parking space, um, we had done a parking space overlay and changed some parking spaces around, and a few of the people didn't like, like, where we had forty-five degree parking in front of the police station, because they thought it was too narrow. Well, we wanted it there, because that slows people down, especially in front of a police station, but went out and lined that and lost like thirty, but when they did that, they lined out parking spaces that, you know, had been there for years and years and years as well. And I notice that like, when you have an intersection, and I know that like if you have a parking space right here, you know, that if you're looking right, that, you know, it kind of blocks your view. But they've gone and taken a lot of parking spaces out on the other side, you know, where, you know, like, I can understand taking this parking space out where, you know, where you're looking right, but on the left, you've got so much of an angle on the other side, and there are probably, like, one example was in front of McSherry's on the, you know, if you're going on whatever the street is between McSherry's and the Ochs. That the right parking space was always allowed, and then they had the left parking space where you had thirty some odd feet, you know, in an easy angle, blocked out, but there are a lot of spaces around Fairhope that are blocked out, that are, if you come up to an intersection. I understand that sometimes if there's a car on the right, it makes it hard, you know, to get out.
Right.
But there are a lot that are over on the left-hand side, that there's no reason they should be blocked out, is there anybody that has looked at that? Because it's just so random that there, that, you know, ninety percent of them are allowed, but it's so random in places, I mean, I'll see them, you know, where the road is even oversized, and it just makes no sense to not have that parking space.
Yeah, and I think we, we talked about before, we're, I don't think it's, it's very clear how those were even Xed out at, at times. Now, there are, there are some parking spaces that are Xed out during COVID times, there was some, uh, a lot of spaces that were Xed out and kind of reserved for parking to, while everybody was struggling a little bit to, to get people in, and not wanting to go inside buildings, and deliveries and pickups. We are looking at those, and I believe those are, some, a lot of those are being scheduled to be, that, that green spaces, that, you know, cleared up and removed.
But I'm saying, I can drive around with you sometime and show you about probably twenty spaces that, if you just gave me some black spray paint, um, we'd game right off.
Ace, we, we'll stop at ace before we start the cycle, yeah, yeah. We'll just stop at ace before we go on that field trip.
Let's do it.
Um, but yes, there, there is, uh, I think, looking at the, certainly the green Xed out spots, that is something that's on our.
So much, because I get those, I've always thought might be nice in downtown to have a few of those, just going out of a, you know, if you have a hardware store downtown again, but just the, you know, the drugstores are grabbing something to pick up, I don't mind a few of those quick ones, just to run into the drugstore, or run into, you know, grab something, if you don't have too many. But, um, but I'm just, I'll, I'll show you what I'm talking about with your driving.
Well, I, I think, I think it is certainly on our radar, and there will be some right-of-way ordinance conversation at the next week's council meeting for on the works session, and looking at some adoption. But one of the things on our radar is kind of looking at all of the parking spaces, because some of those where it doesn't make sense to have a parking place, instead of being striped out, we can curb that and become a planning plan, or outdoor seating area, pocket parks, whatever, you know, there, there's some opportunities around, and I think that's, that's something to look at, uh, in, in, in big picture, and it's something we can accomplish all at the same time.
The other thing is, we might want to look at not allowing three-year parking. Um, you know, putting a dumpster in a parking space for three years, that might be a little bit excessive also.
Yep, and, and you'll see, I think you will see Eric Cortenius in with the building, and Richard Johnson, myself, John Thomas, my, we, we've been looking at some revisions to that right-of-way ordinance, and that is one of the things we're proposing, certainly for construction, um, having a temporary option, but if you're gonna leave it there, there's a daily charge, because those, those parking spaces are, they're not free to us, to the city. So, hav, having that available is something we're certainly striving to accomplish.
Because, you know, with that, those parking spaces were given as a gift from the single tax corporation, with the requirement that they use for parking, a parking only, so.
So we can't fill one in and put a park?
That's not parking only, well, that's considered just parking and part of the landscape ordinance, and feels fine, but.
Okay.
But other uses, you know, like, uh, probably, you know, closing them in for, like they do in Sacramento, and places for restaurant, outdoor dining would probably not, you know, I mean, you just have to get approval from the, you know, directors if something like that was gonna be done.
Okay.
And the parking commission, both.
All right.
All right.
The, I think that was all of our notes.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.